Okay, I am going to call us to order at 6:03. And I will also open it up for public input at 6:03. Well, I'm going off that.
Yeah, just make sure.
Does anybody, so we'll leave it open for half an hour, but as you know, we'll still let you talk. So if, does anybody have anything immediately they want to say? Nope. Okay. So can we move up the presentation, the principal's report, so that our lovely staff could go home if they cho-chews?
That'd be great.
Does that work?
That'd be great.
That would be great.
So much.
Okay, let's do that.
So thank you, Ms. Maglin and Ms. Moja, for coming there. Talk a little bit about OG, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So this has been a lot of what's been training, especially with reading. So you have two experts who've been doing it all year, so thank you for taking the time to come and give the boards kind of the background of what you do and why it's been so important and effective.
Wonderful. All right, thank you for having us.
So Orton-Gillingham is a multisensory approach to early literacy. It also goes all the way through with older students and vocabulary development. But then Newfield Elementary School teachers have been trained in the program this year and a few, the past few years. I was trained a couple of years ago, and I've had the opportunity to use it for a while now. So we were all trained through the Institute for Multisensory Education, and so the methodology of Orton-Gillingham is used. And they concentrate on the five pillars of literacy. So, you know, the sounds that you hear, the phonological awareness, the phonics work that you do blending sounds together, the fluency you develop. Also, there's a big vocabulary component as the kids get older, and that all contributes to the comprehension. So I like to use it in small group work in conjunction with Kirsten's students.
Yeah.
She, she does it in a large group as well as small groups in the classroom. I work with students receiving RTI and special education support in a small group. Sometimes I get a chance to preview concepts or reteach and review and give them a little more of an intensive focus and more practice, so.
It's worked out great. And so I'm going to tag team on what Jen's saying is that this is my first year using it. So she is the local expert. She's been using it a little bit longer. But in the general ed classroom, we were trying out, the program continues to upgrade their materials and supplies, and so they came out with a, their version of like a spelling book this year. So that's what I've been focusing my attention to, and it's a very structured spelling focus. So they have a phonetic focus that we, we do, and it's great because, like Jen says, she can work in small groups and kind of preview some of these phonetic focuses that we're going to be doing in the classroom. And then we do a phonetic focus. We do, they call red words, which you probably have heard your kids talking about red words. Those are the sight words. And so that part's been great for second grade because it uses, it's very kinesthetic, and it uses a lot of movement. So the kids arm tap words. We brought, I brought a red word booklet to show that they use some bumpy paper, so they had that kinesthetic where they tactile. And so, actually, I have, so I have this bumpy paper here, so they, they'll get a word like "first." They, they write it with the bumpy paper, and then they, and they use a red crayon to do it as well. They write it three times, and we do this together, and we use it in a sentence. And so the red word piece has been, I think, really important in second grade because those tend to be the words that kids have a very difficult time with. They're irregular words, they don't follow phonetic patterns, they're sight words. So I've, I have been really enjoying the red word book, and the kids, the kids really take to the arm tapping, so you can see them, and it helps with their memory. So instead of just relying on saying them and tapping them out or sounding them out, the actual movement helps them remember them. So I think they called it, I want to say orthographic mapping, if I remember correctly. So that's been a great piece in the classroom. And then they do dictation as well. So I'll do sentence dictation, and they work on something called cups, which is remembering to use capitals, understanding punctuation, spelling. So they go down a checklist, and they check each, so they check the C, they check the U, they check the P, they check the S. So it's very systematic, it's very structured. The kids know exactly what the task is. So I think it's been great so far in the classroom. And, and then we also included some decodable readers, and so that's the next piece, is that in small groups, we then take that phonetic focus, and we've included some phonetic readers. The very, some are really nicely, some nice phonetic readers there. Then I do a lot of the paper ones as well, which are quick and easy for small groups. And so this one, this first one here is beginning R blends. And so throughout the story, they work with beginning R blends, but they also include red words in the story, vocabulary, there's comprehension questions. And so it's a great follow-up for the lesson. And throughout the week, we continue to do these readers. So this has been a nice additional piece as well, these decodable readers.
Yeah, because there's not a lot out there for decodable practice. So a lot of the books that you find that are called Level One or whatever they might be, they actually have a lot of more difficult words and more difficult concepts that you don't expect a child to really understand how to decode yet. So the beautiful thing about those is that we'll work on a specific concept for a week with the group I was working with. We were doing IGHT, says IT. And then we found decodable books to go with that, so we could practice, practice, practice it within the context of that. And then eventually, we apply it to less controlled books, and they really get a chance to, to do that. So it's great. So every week, or sometimes more often, we might, we'll introduce a new concept. We usually start the week with what's called a three-part drill. So I just have a simple, very simple one with me, but basically, these are just single consonant vowel cards, but I have syllable cards and other things with different phonics patterns that we go over. But we do like a quick flashing activity, you know, I'll just quickly flash the sounds or the syllables, and they're like fluently trying to quickly tell me the sounds. Then we use this blending board. Again, it could be with single sounds or with syllables. This is a little bit like a very simple activity here, but they'll practice blending, you know, they'll say "cub," "cub," and then we'll switch the first sound, and then that becomes "tub." We'll switch the last sound, it becomes "tug." We'll switch the vowel, it becomes "tag." So it's just a big prac, a lot of practice in building our fluency. So we're trying to do this really efficiently. And then there's an activity where I'll have them write either on a whiteboard or in sand, I'll make a sound or a syllable, and they'll practice writing what, what they hear. So those are the things we do in the drill. We also have like intensive vowel practice for our short and long vowel sounds. And did I forget anything?
No, you're doing, yeah.
And then you talked about the dictation, I guess.
Yes, yeah, and I know, and once they, and, once they're in second grade, a big piece of second grade is their fluency and becoming, you know, reading smoothly. We call it scooping up more words at a time, but trying to move away from that one word at a time. And so the fluency piece becomes a bigger, bigger piece to it as well. And, yeah, so fluency, the accuracy, expression, so those decodable readers come in handy as well for that. Let's see.
Yeah. I think you already touched on that.
Yeah.
So that's good. Yeah, so.
And some of, yeah, some, I was going to say, some of the things we go over during the year. So we go over the digraphs. So digraphs are CH, SH, PH, TH, so the single sounds that are represented by two letters. CDC words continue to be reviewed, two-syllable compound words. Spelling rules. Consonant blends are very big in second grade, spend a lot of time. So those are two consonants, two to three consonants that are next to each other, but they retain their own sound, they still have their own sound. So we do T blends and R blends. So those tend to be a big focus during the year. And another big focus are vowel combinations, our vowel teams. So a lot of focus with EE, EA, OA, AI, AY. So those will be focused on as well. And then the multi-syllabic words. I'm going to turn back over to Jen, expert on that.
I don't know about that. But, yeah, so this carries, I know it seems simple what we're showing you right now, but it'll carry over like into college textbooks, really, honestly. When you're looking at multi-syllabic words, you're going to understand the morphology of a word, which is like, a morpheme is like a single unit of sound that has meaning. And if you can figure out that for different syllables of words, your vocabulary goes like through the roof, and you learn Greek roots, Latin roots, there's all kinds of things. Even with my second graders, we were working on like the IGHT, we did insight, and we were like, what does that mean? And one of my kids was like, oh, it means you really get it, you can see inside something. So we went on the etymology site that we use, and we found the history of the word. Turned out the student was right. In 1200, it has Germanic roots, and it really meant, truly understands something, like can really understand it from the inside. So I was like, wow, you know, so we just learn a lot. I think it goes deeper than just, you know, what you think of as a pretty simple concept. So it's really fun, I think.
And I guess the kid's excited to learn something new. And I know sometimes when I'm introducing a new word and we talk about the definition, I also use dictionary.com, and it will tell you, it's like, what level? And they're like, it's, I'm like, it's a high school level, or it's a middle school level, and they try to guess what level the word's at. So just getting them excited about words is another piece that's, it's pretty fun.
Yeah. So there are seven syllable types, and I don't have to go into all of them right now because there's a million, there's just so much you can do with this. But there's the first basic syllables that the kids learn are open and closed syllables, and it helps them to understand if vowels are going to make their short sound or their long sound. And so just like I just, the kids make, we make these little houses together when we first start, start out. And so the little, the door is closed in this house. So this is a closed syllable, and what that means is that the vowel is closed in by a consonant. The consonant is closing the door, and it's squishing the vowel, so the vowel has to make its short sound, it doesn't have room to stretch out. So it has to say "f," so that's "et," "met," I'm sorry. And then when it, oh, when the door opens, the vowel has lots of room to stretch out, there's no consonant closing it in. So then we call that an open syllable, and the vowel can say its name, so it becomes "me." So the kids make these, we talk a lot about it, they analyze words. So it's really fun. And then eventually, what they start to do, even actually as young as like first grade, if I did, they start to, I have this word here, tempo, but they're not sure, is that going to be a long vowel, is that going to be a short vowel? What do I do with that? So we start by learning to, we just map out our vowels, we just sort of identify each vowel. The E and the O, we build a bridge between them, we identify the consonants in the middle, and then they love to do this. We break it up between the consonants here, and we see that we have a closed syllable that's, that, that consonant is closing in the vowel, so we know that this is a short E sound, so that's going to say "f." And then we know that this is an open syllable, there's nothing closing in this syllable, so it's going to say "o," and then they realize, okay, that's tempo. So they start to do that, we go really slowly through it. Eventually, they're not really needing to do this anymore, they just see it in writing, and they can read it. So, but that's a process, it takes time to get to that, and they, they do a great job. So they love to do this, so.
We love our whiteboard work, that's for sure. But it gives them ownership too over the word and being able to map it out like that, and it really does help them distinguish between short vowel sounds and long vowel sounds. So that's, it's a great, it's a great visual, it's great for everybody. So that's, I, that, yeah.
That's about it.
It's a lot to it, it really is. There's always, the classes are, the classes that I've taken, that are OG classes, you're in that class from eight in the morning until four in the afternoon, and there's not, I mean, they're, they give you like 10-minute breaks. I mean, they are packing it in, so it is definitely a top-rated program as far as the amount of information they have for you to take in and then teach in your classroom. And I'm still in my first year teaching it, so I'm still learning it, but I find that this, the way it's structured and the sequential process has been excellent for the classroom. And I love that Jen does it as well, because then some kids get it twice, and those kids tend to need it twice. So it's been really positive, and like Jen said, she can kind of preview different concepts, and then when they see it with me, they're excited, like, we know that! And they get that extra practice. So that's worked out really well, that we're both using it in both settings, so that's been great.
I think that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
I just have a question, I don't know if you guys can answer it, maybe Chris can answer it. How is it working with the older grades? How has OG been introduced? Because, I mean, I know a little bit, but I'm a cheater, because.
I think there is still in the, I know, everybody's at kind of different stages as far as what they've taken for workshops and courses. Jen had mentioned the morphology, so that's kind of, that's the higher-level class that you can take, and that tends to really focus on root words, base words, Greek, Latin, where they're coming from, how prefixes and suffixes, suffixes, suffixes can change the meaning of a word. And so that's, that piece is very interesting, and I think that I'm hoping, you know, as the teachers take those classes, it will come in very handy for vocabulary instruction. But, yeah, it's, it's, at this point, the staff is at different stages with it, so I think I would have to refer to them as far as where they're at with it. But it can definitely be used. And then at the same time, going back and reviewing a lot of these concepts, because so many kids need the extra practice with it right through elementary school. But it, you know, that's what's great about the small group work, is that you can assess where they're at and know, you know, what their needs are. So as they get into the higher grades, the small group work probably makes more sense because certain kids need open and close syllable work, some kids would, are doing more of the Greek and Latin, where the words are coming from, and more complex word histories. So it, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot to learn, that's for sure. Yeah.
I can tell you, the kids know the open and closed very well. I've been schooled many a time. I was like, oh, it's a short vowel. She's like, no, 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 no. And I sort of understood it when she explained it, but it hit home when you shared that with me, so clearly the kids get it, you know.
They do, I mean, I mean, it's just, when they're a part of it, they're like involved with making it, they're involved with, you know, analyzing the phonetics of it, they really, they feel like big kids, and they are, you know? What, what they're doing is pretty impressive, so.
I think the multisensory piece is really an important part as well, because they see it visually, they're doing it kinesthetically, and they're sort of getting it in different ways.
And practicing it with their.
And then explicit instruction as well, like where it's just very direct instruction, how to do it, and the practice. It's not assumed that they, they know how to do that. I think that, but I love the visual with the open and closed syllables.
I know.
Are there red words, sorry, are there red words that are at each level? So like, are there fifth grade red, red words, or?
Yeah, yeah, yes, they do move up. You know, I, I'm up to, I know up to like the third level, but I haven't.
Yep, they can go all the way through, and red words are typically, sometimes they're words, like for our younger kids, they might be words that are phonetically irregular, that don't always follow the patterns, but they also might be words that follow a phonics pattern that the kids haven't learned yet, you know, especially our younger kids. So we teach that as a red word because it's a really frequently, you come across that particular word frequently before you've taught a more complicated concept, but it does go all the way through. And the reason they're called red words is because, you know, we think about a stop sign, we have to stop and think, what makes that unexpected? What's unexpected about that? And then they can kind of analyze it and go through it, but it can go all the way up.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Well, thank you, that was awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for having us.
Very helpful.
It was.
It's only 6:19.
Yeah, right? So moving on to approval of minutes. Did any, I didn't see anything.
I don't think I did either. Nope.
For all, all public?
Yeah, did any, on any, anything?
I didn't see anything.
I did, and I'm trying to find them just to, so many red lines.
I know, right?
Motion to approve.
Uh, yeah, a motion to approve.
Oh, there's three.
There's three of them.
Non-public from March 18th, April 5th, and public and non-public.
Just March, it's March 8th, right? March 8th, April 5th, yep. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, on to manifest and financials.
Miss Molly? Sorry, do you have the manifest? Thank you for signing those. In your board pack is a current year financial. So in the upper left-hand corner are the expenses that were added since the prior month. Did anyone have any questions?
I did.
I did too.
Technology, Power School, I thought we were done with Power School.
So there's two pieces, there's so many different components to Power School, so like measure progress, the performance plus that we collect the data for state testing data, that's still, that's been bought by Power School. So when we're paying for certain components, it's all under Power School. And there's a couple little one-offs that we had to pay for, so we're not using Power School as our SIS that we pay for, but they own many different components. But that's a great question.
Um, under transportation, so we pay for the bus for YMCA? I thought that was.
We do, that was a discussion from the board from last year.
It's fine, I just hadn't seen that as a line item.
We didn't budget for it.
Okay.
But when we talked about after-school, because we could not have a site director here.
Right.
The board at last year said, find a way for our kid staff after-school care.
Yeah.
So we didn't budget for it, we won't be able to do it next year.
Okay.
We'll have to find a site director or not be able to have childcare, but we gave the YMCA and Great Bay Kids a year to say, we'll work with you, but we need to have someone here because we can't, you know, fit that bill or.
Okay.
But that's the reason that that's way over, is that we, from the board discussion last year.
Yep.
We ran a bus without budgeting for it.
I figured, I just wanted to ask because I couldn't, I couldn't remember what the number was, or, I do remember the conversation, but, okay. And professional services for special ed, is that like a new something?
So I don't know, Chris, if you want to talk about ABA expressions? It was, so we did add the expense because it was, at the time, the board pack was printed, we believed we needed. Now, I do think we relieved a little bit of it, but it still is an added expense for most of them, if you want to talk about.
Yeah, it's, it's for students that we, that need that support, that we did not budget for, because they were not students that we would have known at the time when we did our budget. So we did know students were, other students that were here were going to need that service, but that service really expanded based on obligations, based on their needs.
So is there any need for us to take any money from the special ed fund? I guess is why I was asking the question.
So that is definitely something we're going to talk about.
Oh, sorry. I was skipping ahead.
So after we answered any questions on this, I was just going to point out that in here, we talk about the general fund, because the general fund was given back in your tax rate. But when you vote and march for your appropriation, it includes food service. So if you flip all the way to the very, very last page, it does show we're over.
Yeah.
But we always prepay fuel here to get a better rate, and at the end of the year, we always call them, say, okay, how much is left over? And we make a journal entry to next year. So they said about $15,000.
Okay.
So if you, right now, we're showing these little over $9,000.
Yep.
Over spent, so we're going to put 15 back because that has to go to next year. So that we're getting by like on fumes to the end of the year. Now, we do have certain things that are not encumbered, like substitutes, but we also have a lot of purchase orders as we get close to the end of the year, we close out. So like in ABA, for example, they might think that they need it for the $13,700 that got added, but as we get closer to June, we might see a lot of savings there. So we didn't want to draw down on the trust yet.
Okay.
Because I don't want to draw down on the trust if we don't have to. And I think we're going to have a better picture in June.
Okay.
As we close out all the purchase orders, like Jane came by our office this morning, and we literally went one by one by one, to say, okay, is this needed still? Like, what is your needs on this? Because things like, things like snowplow, for example, we encumber it, but, because we think we're going to need it, but it might not be as much.
Better not snow anymore this year.
No. Things like trash removal, for example. So like, if the bill for trash comes under a little bit less, we'll be able to reduce that. And I think in June, we're going to have a better picture.
Okay.
So I think in June is when we would want to make a motion from the trust to be able to do that, because if we don't have to, we're not going.
Yeah. No, that makes sense, I just wanted to.
So that was going to be the next thing is, when I got to the revenue, to say, we're really on fumes here, so.
Yeah.
The other thing, just to highlight, Molly and I met with Michelle, who's also her assistant, and we talked about being able to give you options. We have a safety trust fund, and the last couple of years, we haven't had to tap into it because the state and federal has been giving a ton of money towards that.
Right.
So it may be a thought that we reduce that, that trust down first, because special ed, you don't want to hit that unless you absolutely have to.
Yes.
So we want to give you options as well. So we talked about that today, do we do it today? And I said, no, we're still there, and we can make that decision in June. So June, we'll give you a couple different options of how you would like to proceed if we need to.
Yeah, which we kind of talked about when it came to discussing voting anyway.
Right.
We said that safety and security is pretty healthy right now, so that makes sense.
And I had our accountant go through the safety and security items, everything we bought this year, and she came up with about $10,000 worth of stuff that would qualify as safety and security. So we were thinking that we would go to that first, if we went to special ed. But I would rather not go to anything.
Yeah, if you don't have to.
But in the June meeting, if we have to, we'll come to you to have a motion to prevent, and then what happens is, we would then go to the trustee, trust fund, and ask for them to reimburse the school.
Okay.
Chris, I know you mentioned with the after-care next year, trying to get back in the building. Has there been any talks with Y, the YMCA or Great Bay and like their status?
So I have started to see MOUs come in for next year with other schools. With, with Susie not being here, I have not had that. That will be something that will be, something that will be sped up as soon as she returns.
Okay.
So I want to pinpoint who's going to be here so we can get that information out to the board.
Yeah, because parents definitely, I think, need to know.
So I think they're starting to hire more staff, the staffing crunch they were at a year ago is starting to alleviate, but I can't speak for them, because to be a site coordinator is a different responsibility and certification than to do it at their own site. So it's, that's what we're working with.
So did anyone else have any other questions?
No, I didn't see anything else.
I'll just do my monthly question on, on the food. Are we getting better at receiving money through that app?
Yep, so.
I'm getting better at paying.
Me too.
The second page, actually, I put in the food service.
It's okay.
Analysis, and this is also one of the things, is if the revenue comes in a little bit higher, then it's going to help out the fund balance. So again, it's a, it's our best guess, but on page two, it's actually the food service analysis.
Right.
So pay your bills, people.
So this is a silly question.
So we actually reduce the loss by.
Silly question, though. Is there a way that like Sabrina could print off if people are behind, you put it in the blue folder? Because I'm one of those people that, not going to lie.
Oh, for the parents.
Yeah, for the parents to remind them, like, hey!
Sabrina would have the information.
I'm just thinking, because I know sometimes I forget.
Yeah.
So just having that in the blue folder when you get so far behind would be nice.
Sorry, I didn't mean to say that to make you.
No, it's totally true. I thought of it like two days ago, I'm like, when did I put money in there last?
I get texts from them, that's one of the reasons why. I like the app.
I got the email, but I might ignore it.
I get it from CMS like daily. It's like, stop eating all the.
I was just curious.
It would really be something that we can talk to Susie about.
I've got it on my list. That's a good idea, though.
That's not a bad idea, actually.
Because I know I see the blue folder, like the little envelope used to be great because I go to my checkbook, write it out, be like, here you go.
And it could very well be going to people's spam.
Yeah.
If, if the notification, sometimes that happens and they don't even have any idea that they're behind.
But you were saying you're anticipating that that's going to actually help us a little bit?
So the more revenue we get in, it will offset the loss of food service. So we, every month, go through our analysis. And so since last month, you'll see it, that's the second to bottom line. We actually said, we think it's going to be $4,466 less of a loss than we thought last month. And that's because we were getting more money in. Now, if that trend continues, which we hope it does, then hopefully next month, I'll be able to report even more difference. But we put in our best projection at the time. And the page two, this page here, shows you how we came up with the number.
How are we projecting, I guess, maybe nobody in here knows, but how are we projecting how much food? Like, I know my kids don't eat every day. They pick and choose what they like, but I'm just like...
You know, being with Sabrina and her planning that she does.
Yeah, typically what we try to do is that there's nothing left in that cafeteria for the last day of school. So typically the last week, it's a mishmash of what's left, or what we know is ordered, or what's going to go immediately so that we don't have leftover. And that's typically when she does her June planning of her...
Purge.
Yeah.
Hodgepodge lunch. Let's go.
She does a great job.
No, she does do a great job. I was just curious because, I mean, like I said, there's some kids that eat every day, but then there's some like mine, I was like, I don't like that. And then there's a week that they'll eat everything that week.
But she, you know, remember we presented, she knows that the items that are the hot sellers and the ones that are not. So like turkey sandwiches are not the hottest seller, but French toast sticks are. So during that week, if we're going to have leftovers, it might be, so on the last day, you might have four options of our best sellers because that's what's left.
Sweet. Okay.
I've seen that influence, Naseem.
I have seen that. I've seen the lunch come home and I'm like, why'd you do that? Because they had French toast sticks and we didn't know. I was like, okay, cool.
And so like, and we still have 5,000 encumbered for food. And if she has a lot in the kitchen right now, that might go down a little bit to help us out a little bit.
Okay. All right, cool. No, I was just curious because my kids will definitely throw it all off.
Yeah.
They're too picky.
And the other question I had about food, and maybe this isn't directly, but just to the board. I know we, does, does the food, Sabrina and her team have the space or ever any need to come to us to ask us for any support or questions? Or is that all through the, through the operations of the school? And again, speaking as a relative, a new board member, but just, we've had lots of guests come and sort of talk to us about different things, goings on of the school.
Like as a new program for the, or like new needs?
New needs and adjustments, especially because it is sort of a, it's a variable in our budget that is a little tricky.
Yeah, and during our budgeting process, we always work with Susie, the principal, and ask her if there's any needs in...
You guys do that, okay.
Yeah.
I haven't historically worked with Sabrina directly in the budgeting process, but the expectation is the principal would let us know if there's something upcoming.
Perfect. It's just good to know that she's still supportive.
Like, assume we just do the sinks and stuff.
We did do the sinks because we had to have an audit.
Right.
We were looking at where we've become a federal food lunch program. And part of that too, Bobby, so you know, is that there was a recommendation that we'd have a walk-in freezer. But that was a cost of close to $200,000.
I do remember that, yeah.
So we talked about it because there is, the storage and, and, you know, coolers are a big thing because it's not a lot that we can store in there. So she's doing two shoppings a week for the whole week, usually a Sunday and a Wednesday. So if we won the lottery, that would be my first act. Can we build that out and give her a space to store stuff?
Right, exactly. Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly. Sure.
Is there any anticipated, anybody going back to the tax fares issue?
Well, that's going to depend on how many purchasers we can close out. So right now, the latest prediction I have right here, the return to tax fares was 237.
Does it mean?
Yes. But the more we close out, the more savings we can find, hopefully more of them.
Are there any, I guess, and maybe we ask in June, just preemptively before we start talking budget in the fall. But are there any major expenses that we incurred this year that were totally not at all budgeted that we didn't know were going to happen?
It's the YMCA boss, right? That's...
Well, we knew that.
But I think we also are not planning on that for next year, right? You need something that would be reoccurring for next year as well. I can't think of any, but that's probably a better question for Susie.
Yeah, as of right now, no.
No, okay.
But it is dependent on student population.
What about the...
ABA?
Yeah.
Dependent on student population at the time, no. That circumstance could change and become a yes.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you, as always.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. See you later.
Save your voice.
Save your voice.
Take some tea.
Baseball.
Oh, yeah. Good luck.
Get a whistle.
Oh, it's gross out there. Okay, on to committee reports. So superintendent evaluation committee?
We're meeting next week.
I'm, we're going to do, we're going to do the small ones first and then is that okay? And then we'll do the policies.
We have a meeting next week.
Which day are you guys meeting?
I think it's Friday, if I remember correctly.
Really?
It's during the day, during my lunch hour. My lunch hour, I mean, 20 minutes.
Okay. Communications and community engagement committee, we are meeting again, and I spoke about this last time. We're meeting again in the fall to, and we'll build our communications plan in conjunction with the strategic plan for the SAU. And then I'll just jump to safety and security. We met. It was a great meeting. We did some breakout groups and talked about our overall safety plans and our needs, wants. What did we call them, Chris?
So it's what was the biggest, what's working well in our school?
Yeah, and then...
What was our wonder?
Our wonder. That was our wonder. So it was a really good exercise. And yeah, things are, are good. I don't have anything glaring to report that I can report, I guess, from that meeting. But overall, it was in good attendance and everyone feels pretty good about all of our safety needs right now.
Jenny, just one question. I remember at the joint board, we talked a little bit about the safety and security committee. Does that, that has representation from most or all schools in the town?
All schools.
It does.
All schools, all fire, police from all the towns. And superintendents. And it's a very big room. It's squishy in that room. Yeah, it was, it was really good. And all the principals are there too.
Cool.
So Susie and I were actually in the same group in the breakout, so that was, that was cool.
Yeah, so we, today during our senior leadership, we actually categorized that. So we came up with the top three. So that will go out to you as a member of the committee to be able to talk about.
Okay.
But the three that we had as our wonders, that will be the priorities for next year that we talk about. So reunification is a big one, which we've already started in SAU 16. But also, you know, conversations about roles and responsibilities of community partnerships that we have. So it was a really, I think, great meeting, but gave us a list, but also was, gave us a chance to celebrate some of the really good things that are happening with the trainings. And I think one of the things we took away was the communication that our schools have with first responders, police and fire.
It's really good.
And that came from them as well, which was great to hear. Like, they feel welcome in our schools, that they can come in and have conversations, that they can give us suggestions and ideas and that we work on it together. So you should get that, because we took time today, about an hour to go through that and really code it and come up with our top three.
Yeah, I felt really great leaving our meeting, actually. Yeah, police and fire, they were all from all the communities. We're very happy with how they're working together with the schools and the school boards and local and everybody. So it was a really good meeting. And yeah, I, I loved that. That exercise was really good. And it was good to hear from people whose kids maybe go to other schools. And we're doing really well. So yay.
Were there any budgetary items on the list of wonders, like things that we can anticipate that's purchased or?
Yeah. One of them would be the training that we're going to be doing for the regional reunification. That would actually...
I don't know what that is.
So if there is an event and you have to take your kids offsite to, and then reunite them with their parents or someone, pick someone up. What does that look like? That's changed a lot. And I'm not going to go too deep into it, but we have a presenter that's been presenting nationally to talk about that part of your safety plan because that's the part where schools don't do the best job.
Sure.
But we want to share the costs. We would look at doing it regionally. So bringing Dover and Newmarket and West River into the mix so that we share the cost. So that would be the only budgetary cost. I can tell you that our Southeastern Superintendents Organization, we pay dues. We just, we committed $1,000 to that to reduce the cost to local schools. So it's going to be a shared kind of response, but that would be a budgetary, but we, it should be a nominal one.
It sounds like well worth it, Jenny, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And Chief Kane is now the new...
Chair.
Chair of that committee.
Who's that? Kane?
Yes, Chief Kane. He is, he works for the SAU, right?
He is our Director of Safety and Security.
Director of Safety and Security.
Retired Exeter Police Chief.
Yes. It was unanimous decision that he be the chair.
Ellen has a very good nickname for him.
I call him, well, we, we at the SAU, when I did start it, we called him Chief Dog.
He is Chief Dog. He's really good at finding us money, though.
He doesn't love it, but we still, we do.
They like to razz him. It's quite comical, actually. Okay, so on to policy committee. And, you know, the...
Novel.
The novel of medical dissertation. Oh, my good lord.
So as the rep on the committee, I have to first apologize. This was my first policy committee I was not able to make. And I feel bad because of course it's all medical. But I am happy to provide any suggestions. I do have a couple of edits, but I'm sure, did you want to like do an introduction or?
I have a question before we get into it.
Yeah.
Are most of these new policies or are they, okay, they're like...
No, no, I was saying, mm-hmm, as in I'm hearing your question. Most of them are not new.
Yeah, I saw. They're not. Okay, because I just didn't see like the, like usually it says the last time they were revised and stuff and they didn't. That's why I was like, are they...
Heather did a great summary.
She did.
But if you look at the copy we're giving, we weren't giving them the new Fields District copy. It says school.
Right. Yeah, I guess that's why I was confused.
So that might be why it's not there because it's probably on our school-specific policy.
Okay.
So yeah, most of them are not new. A couple of, there are a few new ones, but those are the exceptions.
Do we want to do them in order?
Okay, so E B, yeah, E B C G.
I am nothing.
So that is the new policy.
It's...
E B C G.
It says X by the new.
It's a new policy, but it's replacing...
I H A M C.
I H A M C, which addresses only HIV and AIDS.
Correct.
So I did have a few comments.
I would hope so.
Nothing, nothing huge, but... So the first paragraph, I thought, this is, for folks, it's communicable and infectious diseases. The first paragraph, I didn't find anything problematic. The second paragraph, the fourth line just says, others with whom the student comes in to contact, comma, I just inserted the word incorporating recommendations from the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services and others. Because I felt like it didn't really, the sentence is enormous, right? But you know how sometimes when the sentences keep going on, it loses sense of what's trying to go there? I just felt like, I can read the full sentence if you want.
Yeah, please do.
As provided in this policy, determinations as to inclusion or exclusion of students or employees with communicable diseases from school will take into account the educational implications for the student and others with whom the student comes into contact. And it just says, comma, recommendations from the New Hampshire Department. It lists a very long list, but then there's no, there's nothing after that. And so that's why I thought if you add the word incorporating, it'll close the grammar of that sentence, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Sorry, I could have just said add the word, but I wanted that. So that was that. The part for CDC, it was interesting, it actually had me do a little bit of reading. The Public Health Services is like a large organization. And the Center for Disease Control is a, an organization basically under its auspices. So I just recommended putting a parentheses after it. So Public Health Services, parentheses, Center for Disease Control and Prevention. That's actually what it's called, to just add and prevention. And then the next paragraph lists all of the diseases, or many of the diseases. And I just made a suggestion that maybe we should just list them and then maybe put them in lowercase as opposed to capitalizing them all, other than the ones that are acronyms. So herpes simplex virus, I would do lowercase h, lowercase s, lowercase v. I think I would also get rid of N-related diseases. Oh, I see why they're trying to do that. See, that's, because they're, they're calling out, the first one is a virus and the other one is a diseases that are indicated by them. It's just very clunky and chunky and...
Well, then if you think it's clunky, I definitely think...
But I feel bad I wasn't at the meeting, so I don't, was there a robust conversation about it at the meeting? Okay, so...
Not with regards to the specific section of the policy that you're speaking to.
I mean, are these the only, I guess my question with the, the listing of, are these the only ones?
No, because it says another disease.
Other diseases. Yeah, like, I guess what's...
I mean, so it's sort of funny to me that they called out herpes, like herpes first.
I know.
But really, if you want to make it consistent, you can sit, because they're trying to list all the diseases, you can just say herpes. So say not necessarily, not necessarily limited to herpes, chickenpox, shingles, hepatitis B, infectious, that's mono, HIV, AIDS. But AIDS is the quote disease, the syndrome. But then CMV isn't a disease, so I would probably, do you know what I mean? Like, if we're just being parallel, I would... I don't know. How, how specific do we want to, do we want to list all of the diseases slash viruses?
I guess that was kind of my question, like what is considered? I mean, I imagine there's a huge amount that I don't even know exists, so...
Well, and notably absent is COVID, you know, of course.
Right. Even like the flu is not here. Like what?
I think the intention, it sounds like it's just trying to expand it beyond what it was originally, which was just HIV. And I think we all agree to that.
I think it's important to have some form of examples.
Of a list, yeah. So can you want to maybe get rid of or remove the herpes and just limited, including but not necessarily limited to chickenpox, shingles, hepatitis?
I guess the way it's written, included but not limited to, I guess that means there's more, a heck of a lot more. So...
I just thought it was odd that we were calling out HSE, which I create all the time, but it's just a strange first one. And then everything else is a, is a disease. And then they're all, they're all capitalized. We don't need to spend any more time. That was just my observation, that it was a little...
The CDC's listed in the...
It does. Well, it, it does. That's the first line. It's provided in this policy, determined as the inclusion or... I told you, you need like a PhD to read this thing.
Would anybody be upset if we removed a condition or two on there to make it read easier? Or do you want to just leave it as is and make it all lowercase?
I'm fine leaving it. I just want to make sure it's clear that it's more than just this.
I think that piece is clear.
Yeah.
I think it's very clear that it's more than just the list that's here because it's not limited to, and then at the end, and other diseases. It's very clear that it's more than this list.
Okay. Then how about just changing everything lowercase except for the thing that's an acronym, so AIDS, everything else is lowercase.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I mean, honestly, I kind of defer to you if you're comfortable with it.
I was going to say.
Okay. So that would be my recommendation. It's just to lowercase h in herpes, lowercase s in simplex, lowercase v in virus, lowercase c in chickenpox, lowercase s in shingles, lowercase h in hepatitis, lowercase i in M and infectious and mononucleosis.
Okay.
And then lowercase c inside of megalovirus. Sorry, that took a lot longer. You now learned a lot about virology. And then the only other big thing on page, the top of page two, this is one of those grammar things. I just crossed off the word they in the second line, so they will report it to, just put, will report it to the school nurse. The sentence, "School district employees included contract individuals and their agencies who are performing contracted responsibilities for the district and who become aware of communicable or disease or other potentially serious health problems," run on sentence, blah, 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 blah. Will report it to the school nurse.
Yeah, not they will.
And then I can't remember what we always decide with the capital P or not for principals.
Were there any major discussions on, on this? Ellen?
There were not.
Okay.
On page three...
You know, other than what we've already discussed in terms of the origin of this policy being a new policy, what it's replacing and that extent, but...
On page three, the Roman numeral three, just under PPE, I would just recommend getting rid of the apostrophe s, just PPE. And then is practicable, practicable a word?
It is.
Okay, so then I would defer. I'm sure there are a lot of lawyers on that call, so.
I was all having the same question a number of years ago.
Yeah, that's the only thing I didn't know. Yeah, that's the only thing I didn't know of that.
That would definitely be a red word. You like that?
The question with executive orders, is that a capital E? Is that a big deal? I had, because that's twice in this document, I'd never seen it.
Where are you looking?
You know, on page three, number three, the fourth line down, executive slash emergency orders.
All right.
And then it, it shows up again on page four, so it, it is consistent, I just didn't know if you.
Well, a piece of background that I gave at, at the policy committee meeting is that myself and Caitlin Anglia, who's one of our school nurses, she's a school nurse at Main Street School, we sat together and reviewed all of the, you know, the model policy recommendations, you know, in conjunction with our current policies and just had it, had that really lengthy discussion with regards to each and every one of these policies, word for word. And to make sure that, because sometimes things, they, you know, they make a lot of sense in writing with regards to a policy, but do they translate into, you know, practice well? So I wanted her input with regards to that.
I was, that was exactly what I was going to ask, is does, do any of the school nurses, have they seen this and does, okay.
Yes, I meet with the nurses monthly, sometimes Renee Bennett joins as well, our Director of Student Services. And we ask for volunteers to partake in the policy review. So yes.
Because yeah, as I was reading through this, I was like, is, does, my biggest question was, does any, do any of this go against their contract? Does any of this go against their, what's actually happening or, yeah.
Right, right, the essential functions of their position, right, no, they, that was not something that was noted.
Okay. Okay.
And then the only other thing on this whole section, believe it or not, was that same section, number three on page three, that sentence on the, the third line, some exception may exist under specific legislation or executive emergency orders in which, I just thought maybe, in which case such legislation or executive order shall supersede the policy. Unless that's like a legal sentence.
On page three, what part are you on?
Right here.
Okay, under, okay.
In which case, I don't think it changes it either way, but we can add case.
Just throw it in, you just. I'm fine with keeping the executive capital E, governor's order, okay. Otherwise, it looks good.
Okay. I M G.
That only applies to exeter and Kanban.
Oh, thank God.
We don't have to?
No.
Nope.
Yours is fine.
The next one we do.
They didn't have it.
So, so I M G is not for us.
Too bad.
So next, we, we won't include it if it's not for you, so we just, well, you have seven elementary schools all up.
It's all good, I, yeah. I was like, we can't have animals come visit, okay. Okay, so I G, I M G A.
I didn't have anything.
I did either.
I did. The sentence above section A, two A, it's the last sentence, all species of animals, whether domestic, trained or untrained, are not service animals for purposes of this definition. She didn't say like all other species of animals because we talk about dogs and miniature horses being accepted.
Wait, where are you?
Yeah, I actually thought about that too, and then I just assumed it was a legal thing, but I know what you mean.
Well, because by that sentence, the other, the other two don't exist. So can we add the word other, all other species?
Sure. I think it would make more sense.
Got it.
And then I had another question. Because under D, it talks about service animals like being a threat or causing problems within the school. So my, one question is, is allergies, because there are kids that are allergic to animals and horses and dogs. So what would happen, because our school is so small, if a student needed a service animal and their classmate happens to be highly allergic, what would we do? Does that make sense?
It does, I do wonder, there are certain practices in place when there's an allergy, like the peanuts already in, in the classroom. So I'm wondering if that's at the, would that be at the classroom level? I totally agree, yeah, it's a valuable and valid question.
Yeah, I'm thinking about that one.
Was there, I mean, was there discussion about a service animal being here all day? Because that's.
No.
Service animals we have now are like short periods of time for specific purposes.
I think it's really handled on a case by case basis and certainly allergies are something that can be a part of the discussion and you just work through it as it comes. Certainly, there's a lot of sensitivity to allergies and a lot of conversation that we do have to make sure that we're putting the necessary precautions in place as best we can. I think it's more of a take it as it comes type of.
It does say, you know, otherwise presents a threat to the public health, which you could consider. It mean, meaning it's, it's acknowledged that at least.
It was just something that I was, that I was thinking, because I do know that there are kids that are allergic, so. I'd always say other things on that one.
Yeah, I think it, it would be something we'd have to work through.
I know.
Do we, do we want to hold off on this one and maybe, is it something that we should add into?
I think really, if you're, if you want some additional input, I think that we're really well versed as, as school districts when it comes to managing allergies, and I don't think it would necessarily needed to be included in this policy. I think we fall back to how we handle other situations that involve allergies.
I agree, and also I, I think stating that, if there is any public health risk that the animal involves.
That would cover.
Yeah, it sort of acknowledges it there.
Acknowledges it, okay.
Do we have a list of kids and their allergies at the university? We do?
Nurse has it, yeah.
Yep.
All right, I just want to make sure because I'd hate for an animal to come in and a kid have severe allergy reaction, so.
Oh, no. Messed up the.
That's why I'm the binder, because I, I knew I would do that.
Okay, here we go. Okay, so our, okay, that's good. So J L C.
So some of the, the other thing I forgot to mention earlier, when I talked about when I met with one of our school nurses and we looked through all these policies, one of the things that I noticed is that, and it's specific within this policy as well, which is why I'm bringing it up now, is that you see a lot of, there's a lot of crossing out. What they did is they did, it's really a formatting issue, they still, this policy still is inclusive of the same concerns on page two that are all crossed out, they just really formatted it differently, but are saying the same thing. So it's not a substantive change from the original policy.
This is the one that I had the big, does any of this go against their contract?
No, because it's not, it's not, it's not substantively different than the policy we already have.
Okay.
It's really mainly a change in formatting.
Yeah, it, it looks like some things are summarized, some things are bulleted and.
But it's conveying the same expectations of the role of the school nurse.
Okay.
And their, that school nurses are comfortable with this policy.
Ellen, the only question I had was, I'm not familiar with the, the term individual healthcare plan, or does that mean insurance plan? Or is that, that's not I E P, it's, but what is that?
Sometimes a student has a health related issue, but they don't need accommodations for sec, and they don't qualify under section 504.
So it's like a, okay.
It's an individual health plan, they're not very common.
Okay, that's why I don't, never heard. Okay, that was the only question I had on that one.
Yeah, I didn't have any changes, I just had that question.
I didn't have anything on that one.
Look at that.
Nice.
Okay, immunizations. My only question, and I kind of asked Bobby before we sat down, well, when we were, was, because I went to this link that's at the bottom, the appendix reference, and it didn't work, so I couldn't find. Because it lists out the M M R, whatever that is, I don't know. And then, and it lists out flu, but flu is not one that's actually required. So, sorry.
The reason why, where does it list?
It's under A.
Under A, yeah, so the reason why they're calling out the ones that are listed there is because there are this subset called live attended, which means that there is like a very specific regiment for how it's administered. And it's saying, those are the ones that are not allowed to have the grace period, you know, they need to be allotted this particular way. It's not saying that those are required.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it is.
Got it, I just was confused by why it even.
You probably could have removed.
In here because it's not one of them that's required, so. But then, yeah, I, I don't know why I.
So this link worked to get to the S A U, but the link on the S A U webpage.
On the S A U doesn't work.
Was a dead link, so we just need to update the S A U link. And that's, I think D H H S has retooled their website a bunch of times, and that's.
Because I went on to look and see like what, what are the required, and I was like, oh, this isn't working, so.
Yes, the state websites are often under construction.
The only question I had on this one was under E one, for the health exemptions. As written, it says that, and this might be the, the New Hampshire law, so that's, then it needs to be what it is. It says, from their physician, that immunization will be detrimental to the student's health. So is, does the law, do we know, state that has to be a physician versus like an N P or a P A? Because I know a lot of primary care practices are now run by N Ps or.
That is a good question that I do not have the answer to.
Because we, we could just replace physician if we wanted to with healthcare provider, but I don't know.
That would make sense.
Yeah, because I don't.
You know what I mean, like it would make it really difficult. And there are some forms in, in the state, including the tinted windows, that has to be a physician, which is really bizarre. If you want to have a tinted window, it has to sign by a physician, but.
Something did come, let's see here.
I know, I was looking at what you guys talked about.
And I'm sorry, I probably would have asked all these questions if I was able to make that meeting.
No, you're fine.
Let's see, I am checking this out because, let's see, the laws listed here on a recent update that came from the New Hampshire School Nurses Association.
Oh, cool. Authorized healthcare provider, is that what you mean?
Yes, they say a licensed physician or authorized healthcare provider. So I think we changed it to healthcare provider, that's exclusive.
Okay.
We found out at the same time. And we may want to just mention that to the other, just as courtesy to the other districts, because it might make.
Come up.
An unnecessary burden for some people.
That's an out of point.
Does anybody else have anything on this one?
Nope.
Okay, J L C C. Someone gave me the heebie jeebies, lice conversations.
The one question I had is, can, do we have, it wasn't clear to me reading that second to last paragraph, can the student get treated in school for it? Because the, that sentence, that paragraph says, if the student is, or one of the paragraphs says, if the student is comfortable, they can remain in class. But it made me think, well, if we have the ability to treat the student with like a what, you know, in school, because I couldn't tell if, if that was. Right, because it says verbal, and our written instructions for treatment will be given to the family.
Have lice will remain in, in, in class provided the student is comfortable, if the student is not comfortable, they may refer, okay.
So I think.
Well, it says.
Just as it says instructions for treatment, but that the nurse wouldn't actually treat it?
I mean, this came up on Monday night and the comment was that as soon as parents called that they have lice, they're out of the school, parents are picking them up anyways, so it's really not, they, they take them, they get them treated. So it didn't even get up, could the nurse treat them? Because they're.
I, I agree that that's probably mostly, but this policy actually says the, the kid can stay in school and.
Yep, right.
The parent doesn't have to pick them up.
Exactly. So I was just talking about the treatment part, like.
Oh, I see.
Yes, but typically, as soon as they know, the parents are there to pick them up, so they're treating them. So it wasn't a discussion with another, we had another doctor on, on that board as well.
There wasn't too much discussion at the policy committee meeting regarding this specific policy other than it was news to some people that not all, you know, that students can remain in school.
Yeah.
Oh, really? I knew, yeah, I knew that, I was shocked by that, but.
I'd do like that we state why, you know, what's the recommendation.
No.
I think it's fine. Turn to the next one.
I'm calling you and it happens, help. Okay, J L C D and C R kind of together, so.
Question, is there such a thing as like substitute nurses? So like if Nurse Merrick wasn't out?
Yep.
They're hard to find.
One of them called me the other day.
Well, I was just wondering like if we didn't have a substitute for Nurse Merrick and she wasn't here, who would be administering medication to students?
Your principal of schools, or we call the parents to come in, but you can, and the principal can sub in in that circumstance.
And I'm assuming we have locked cabinets and refrigerators?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else? Okay. On either one of those? J L C D R?
That's all I had for those two, yes.
Okay.
The nurses approve like that one as well?
Yes.
That's really the most important part.
Right, yeah.
Talk this through extensively, this also comes up, I would say, somewhat regularly at our nurses' meetings, just any questions with regards to medication, you know, it is a, it's, it's a big part of their job, so we discuss it often.
Okay, J L C D A.
The parent consent.
I have nothing.
As I'm bringing it, is, do we have, I feel like every time we see the word parent in any school related language, we have parent slash guardian. Do we have precedent for having that in the title or is it important just to keep it efficient and consistent? To have just parent consent?
Oh, like parent slash guardian consent?
I don't want to make it more confusing if that's like not how we file things, but if folks are okay, we probably should just put parent slash guardian consent in the title? Can we change the title?
That's a good question.
If not, it's fine, because it's, the rest, the policy itself explains it, but.
Let me look at some of our other policies, let's see here for a second, and see if we have, just to be consistent.
Right, that's, that's what I'm saying, if, if we make everything inconsistent, I want to.
Oh my God, there's so many policies.
I don't know what's on.
Just looking at some of our other titles here.
Other ones are short.
One second.
I know, those first ones were long. In the writing.
So we have one policy that says, title one, parent involvement in education, parental objections. Now, let's see, policies that are inclusive of parent slash guardian, just as far as policy title.
I think it's okay because we address it in the body.
No, I agree, let's keep it, and then maybe at the next policy meeting, I could, if it comes up, I'll bring it up and see what people think.
Okay. J L C E, emergency care and first aid. Please get them, emergency care.
The only question I had for both this one and the, oh, I guess it's the same one.
The concussion?
No, sorry, I didn't realize it was the same. Is, do we mention expiration dates on any of these? Or is that sort of a given?
Oh, on the policy?
Um, no, I'm sorry, on the, on the medication in the first aid kit. Like I saw a story in the. Like I saw a story in the medication consistent with the manufacturer's instruction, and that might just imply that, that also includes making sure that the expiration date is not, you know, past due. But I know like on the earlier one, for storing the meds, it had said, you know, keep the temperature at this, that, and the other. And I just felt like it might be, make sense to, to call out that you're not stocking expired Narcan or Epi.
Is that implied in storing, the sentence about storing medication consistent with the manufacturer's instruction?
Yeah, that was a question, and it probably is.
I would think so, yeah.
Just one of those.
So that's a good question.
Okay, and then concussions and head injuries.
You said that with such joy.
Oh, you know, we've had them, a couple of them in my household, so you know, I'm very.
Was this a modification, Ellen, or a new one, I don't remember.
This is a modification.
Okay. Oh, just the emergency care and first aid was a new one, I didn't, emerged.
Yes. Concussions and head injury, that policy really came into play in 2020.
Yep.
So there's a lot of work done throughout SAA 16 at that point in time, as folks may recall, to develop that policy.
And as far as the elementary school boards go, who is the, is it the, like, there's no coaches really here, are there?
Oh, you have your track.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Jump rope.
But does this refer to like PE as well?
Sure.
In that case, it would be the PE teacher?
Yeah, that came up at the policy committee meeting, we did clarify that.
Does NYAA do concussion training?
You would have to ask the NYA president, which I am no longer.
I'm just asking.
With a smile, no, we have not. However, I mean, we, that being said, it's not, that it's not taken seriously, it's with abundance of caution, we.
I just figured I'd ask, because I've coached other youth organizations, we had concussion training, so.
They have a lot more money than us. Okay, anybody else with that? JLCJA, Emergency Plan for Sports-Related Injuries, Additional Protocols for Athletics.
This is a new policy.
What is a wet bulb globe? Sorry.
If you don't know, I definitely don't know.
I mean, we sometimes call the GI the globe or the orbit, but that's not, must be a sports term. This is a new policy, it sounds like it's in compliance with an RSA, so.
Do we, we don't have an athletic director or coordinator, do we?
Well, you have an athletic director for all of SAA 16.
So since this is a new plan, a new, a new policy, I'm assuming that our sports industry emergency action plan has not happened yet? Or maybe it has, but it's not like an official.
There are sports plans that has to be created by both the athletic director at the middle school and high school.
Okay.
So that would mirror very similar.
Okay. So here, at the elementary level, then. Since we don't have licensed athletic trainers.
Well, it says nurse, the principal or nurse, I guess, would be the. Sorry.
When you go down, it still says it, so would we replace language, or?
Well, it just says list the employees, so even if it's just.
Yeah, just the list.
And again, this is saying this will happen, it's not saying that, so I guess we should probably communicate this to, if they don't already know, like, the principal.
I guess, my question is, is if this. Maybe I'm just reading it too fast, but if a student gets a concussion outside of school. Does this policy address that in how they re-enter?
Typically, they, if a student has a concussion, they will be qualified for some type of modifications in school. Hat, sunglasses, reduced lighting, reduced tech time, so then we follow that. Then they have to do a testing protocol before they can go back to competing.
Right, okay.
That's the baseline testing that our kids have to take, six through 12.
Right, so that would fall back to JL CJ, would be this policy about concussion.
Okay.
That's a.
That's what I thought, but there's a lot of policies that overlap, so I just wanted to make sure, okay.
Absolutely.
I didn't see anything other than just clarification of.
So Chris, just a clarification one more time of the board's role, especially when we have new policies, we, it's our role to approve them, but we are not necessarily tasked with implementing them at the school level. Or even communicating them to the rest of the school.
No.
Nope, that's the, on the role of the.
The administrator. Thank you.
All right, I will make a motion to pass.
Are you going to read them?
E, B, C, G, I, M, G, A, J, L, C, J, L, C, B, J, L, C, C, J, L, C, D, J, L, C, D slash R, J, L, C, D, A, J, L, C, E, J, L, C, J, J, L, C, J, A, as amended, if there were any amendments to them.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was efficient, though.
All right, that was better than I thought, because that was a lot of policy. Okay, was there anything else, other than the, the presentation for the principal's report?
No.
In what we got in our packet, okay. And then new business, general assurances?
Yes, so thank you, Jenny, Jenny signed off on the federal general assurances, which now allows us to finalize our, our grant. So we'll make an application, then we'll be able to get our money, you can't do that until the board chair and the superintendent has signed on. So you have to do it at a board meeting and record it, so thank you for doing that.
No problem. And then the Maureen Hackett Memorial Trust Fund, Chris, I sent that over to you.
I did not print it out, do you have the printed copy?
I don't have the printed copy, litter, you do, okay. The only change was removing the word March. Because, so that we can spend the money really anytime and not just March. So we're the last ones that need to approve it, all of the other.
My name is spelled wrong.
Oh, is it? Sorry, I didn't even.
They put an M instead of an N.
So you want to just initial that, if we want to sign that copy, then we can have them send it over. If you're comfortable with that.
So that was, all that was.
So if you're comfortable making a motion to change that, we should make a public motion.
Okay. I make a public motion to accept the changes in the Maureen Hackett Memorial Trust Fund, to remove the word March.
And to change my name.
And to change Jackie's name.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, it'd be aye at the same time.
I'll take that back, I'll scan that to them tomorrow.
Thank you, Chris.
I'm just going to double check, because the one that was emailed, it does say March.
Yes.
So that's the old one?
I think that's, no, I think this is, that's just like what it was originally.
Oh, originally, got it.
Originally, we're changing it to, yeah.
So March exists in the document.
It exists, and it's going to be from, yeah.
I get it.
Got to be able to spend that money. And then proposed 2024 lunch prices.
Yeah, so we are, we would like to make the recommendation, due to increasing food costs, inflation, transportation, packaging, and as you've seen in our board pack, it's the cost of food. 10 cents, so our food lunch price next year would be 3.35, it is something common across all of our SAU schools, that we'd be going up 10 cents. At our elementary schools, middle school and high school, a little bit different than their recommendations, but it was a 10 cent increase minimally for, for our elementary schools.
Okay.
So I would need a formal motion if you were able to accept that.
Does anybody want, does it, discussion?
The only question I would ask, and we don't need to really, you know, I wanted to know if 10, because 10 cents is 10 cents, but is that what, you said that was consistent across the board for?
Yeah.
Not percentage-wise, it was 10 cents?
10 cents, yep.
And when was the last time we made an increase?
We did last year, but we hadn't made an increase, and we went up 25 cents last year, we were at $3 for.
For a long time, I think since I've been here.
I just think in increments of quarters, I was.
Because I know the increase is for the increase in food costs, but with the increase in like supplies being used by the lunch, is that going to be enough of an increase to help us?
So you're never going to have enough until you get, you know, five, $6 before you get even, but that's the game of food at small schools. We don't make a profit, except for anybody, except for really at the high school. Because you have to have X amount of kids every day buying to be able to get that cost here, as well as Sabrina tries to keep the cost of like a dollar per kid per lunch.
Tacos every day.
If we voted to increase it to 10 cents, is there any role or potential for involving the community, the, the parents to say, would there be willingness to? I feel like at one point I did answer a survey about school, not this year, maybe a while ago.
That was when we.
From 3 to 3.25.
It was last year, yeah.
In that, as we said, a 10 cent increase is going to be a minimal increase in revenue, but there might be 100% of parents who responded that said that a quarter increase is not off the table. Is that something that we could revisit, when does the, the set price for next year's lunch have to be decided by?
By your last board meeting, so we could hold off, if you'd like us to do a survey to see.
You're saying, you're saying you think people might be willing to pay an additional 25 cents instead of an additional 10? Do we think there's a need for an additional 25?
I mean, this is the first time we've had double-digit students that are qualifying for a reduced lunch.
So, yeah, that's a good point. So I guess, I'm not, I'm saying we should, I would approve the 10 cent increase tonight. I'm just saying if we wanted to revisit it either next month or in the future, but it sounds like that has to be set by next month, so.
Yeah, so we could say that our, we don't have to, so here, how about this, let me put this out there. We are thinking of, we need to increase school lunches for costs.
Fair.
We're thinking of 10 cents to be consistent with other schools of the SAU, however, you know, would you be willing if we went up to 25 cents? That would be the cap, and we could get a survey out just to see what that's at.
Because.
That would give you the information that we might, might be a little bit better for, to have that for next month.
To me, that would make more sense, because if it's a 10 cent increase across the board, but our price is 3.25, and everybody else's price is four bucks, you know, 10 cents isn't the same, you know, it's not the same percent increase.
Pretty consistent at 3.25, I think only Exeter Elementary School is lower, I think they're $3 on lunch. I think everybody else.
I mean, I'm not opposed to putting out just a quick, like, hey, what do you think?
I don't want to make more work, but.
In that survey, could you also say, like, how often does your child buy lunch? You know what I mean, like, because if your child always brings lunch.
Depends on if it's Taco Tuesday, every Tuesday or not.
So we, we know how many kids buy lunch every day.
Well, I was just thinking about those that respond to the survey, right? So if my kid takes, brings lunch every day, I might be like, yeah, sure, you can up it to 25 cents, because I'm not paying it. You know what I mean, like?
I won't be able to decipher who's answering it.
Yeah.
Who would put out the?
We would, we'd come out from the school.
You're comfortable with writing?
I don't think it's a bad idea, because, I mean, we talk about communication, we talk about getting parent input on decisions, and I think it's, I mean, it's, it's a financial decision, I'm not, it's not a huge gantic in the grand scheme of things, but I'm, I'm happy to ask. In good faith. And then we can just, we can make a decision at the next.
Next one.
Yeah, we can do that next one.
All right, cool, thanks, Chris.
I just assumed it was going to be a quarter, make a nice even three fifty.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, there's the.
On the next page.
Oh, God, I didn't flip over, I'm so sorry. I double, oops. Board approval of superintendent hire over the summer.
So every year, we ask you around this time, that, since you don't meet in the summertime, if we did have a abrupt leave in a certified staff member, because you approve any nominations of certified staff members. So again, that doesn't cover paraprofessionals, it covers anybody that's under our certified staff contract, that you'd give the ability for the superintendent to hire that, without the board having the, the final approval of that recommendation.
Yeah, didn't last year we say to make an attempt to.
To convene.
To con.
Within like three days, wasn't it?
It was like two, or something.
Two in three days.
I do remember there being a discuss, I was on the board then, but I remember.
That's, that was the motion, that if you couldn't get together.
If you couldn't get together in three days and two, then you could go for it.
So.
How did that work?
How did that work?
I'm just going to tell you, it's going to, the summertime. We're all not going to be in the office, we're not going to be able to run a meeting. That's the time we tend to get off, and for you all, if you don't have a quorum, there's only three of you, so if two of you are away, do we still vet that individual to a T before we hire them? So, but we, if you're, if you want that, we can definitely do it, it's just.
And this would be Dr. Asbo?
It'd be Dr. Asbo, yep.
I'm comfortable.
I'm comfortable with it, yeah. Okay. So I'll make a motion, right?
Yep.
To approve the superintendent to hire over the summer.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Old business?
What old business?
Do you not have any old business?
Next meeting is 6:07. And do we need to?
We do need to go into non-public.
Okay, so we're going to go into non-public, I'm making a motion to go into non-public for RSA, which one is it?
It'd be A, letter A, oh, RSA 190, RSA 91.
91, A, dash A.
Letter A.
At 7:30.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, guys.